Good evening and welcome back to school. I'd like to call the Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025 Board of Education meeting to order. Vice President Roger Banataria is going to lead us in the pledge, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and at this time, we'll turn it over to Ms. Mary Fox Alter for our superintendent's update.
So, welcome back to school. This has been a very, very exciting two days, emotionally exhausting on many levels, and everywhere from anxious ninth graders that had the building to themselves initially, and a couple of criers at Park and at Brookside, but just excited. And I want to thank the administrative team for helping out. Every single director and assistant superintendent had an assignment in one of the schools, whether it was helping with buses out in cafeteria, helping around, making sure dismissal went. I just want to thank everybody for all their help and support as we get our kids back and get used to all their routines, et cetera, for the school year. Just a shout out to anyone who is listening and tuning into our board meeting this evening. We are looking for members to join our district communications committee. Applications are available on our OBLAS and on our social media channels. So if you think you could help support us in this, please join. At our opening ceremony, and again, I want to thank Annie and Christine for representing the board and being there, we honored 24 staff members who each celebrated 25 years of service to the Austin schools. And when I read off the list of what we were watching and what we were listening to and what movies were, I couldn't believe it was 25 years ago. In a flash, it went by. I want to thank O Prime for opening for their fantastic back-to-school event at Austin High School last week. We had perfect weather for it. We had lots of parents come in and lots of our community partners attended. The back-to-school nights begin, I can't believe we're here, talked about this. My OBLAS today included a very quick reference sheets at one glance with all the dates with all the schools, so please check the district calendar for that. Please check the short calendars for it, and please take a look at the OBLAS because the dates are there. I'm hoping to see many of our community members this Saturday, September 6th, at the annual Run Walk for Education hosted by Austin Matters, always a wonderful event. And I look forward to helping out handling some awards at the end of the event. Right? And again, just to save the date, mark all your calendars. Austin High School Homecoming is coming up a little early this year, Saturday, September 20th. And obviously, it's homecoming weekend. There are events that Friday, Friday afternoon, Friday evening. And so mark your calendars and take a look again in this week's OBLAS. It had the dates and times of many of the games and different events that are happening on September 19th and September 20th. So those are my updates for this evening.
Fabulous. All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to take a motion to move up 6.3.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, and now I'll take a motion to vote on 6.3.
So moved.
6.3, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Appointments. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. And we moved that up this evening because we are hiring a staff person. Ms. Ciara Ramirez, who's here with us this evening. I don't know if anybody would like to say a word or two?
I'd be happy to. Thank you for coming, Ciara. Ciara is being appointed tonight for English teacher at AMD. We congratulate her. She is an outstanding candidate, master's from Teachers College, been a teacher at KIPP Academy for a number of years, and we are thrilled to have you come aboard and join our team. So congratulations to you and congratulations to AMD.
Thank you and welcome. And this is the point where we usually say, you know, you're welcome to stay, of course, but you're also free to leave if you don't want to stay here all night with us. So thank you and welcome to the Austin community.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, now we're ready for our work session, which is also our equity item for this evening, our district goals. And this is a continued discussion from last week. And I believe we have a presentation, so I'm going to turn everything over to Mary Fox Alter.
All right, so I am happy to be able to start, continue the conversation, I should say, on district goals. For those of you who are listening and watching, there are a number of different types of goals a school district embarks upon each and every year. The superintendent has goals, all the administrators have goals, the Board of Education has Board of Education goals, and then we have district goals. The district goals are like, I often use this terminology, they're similar to a lighthouse that shines a beacon out for all paths, for all of the schools who are ships and the direction towards that light. And it's about setting aspirational levels of work that we need to do. And then everything else channels from there, that every person on their journey who oversees a department will turn around and say, these are my benchmarks, this is my data, these are the things I want to accomplish this year, and I'm using the Board of Education goals as that endpoint, as that guiding light to help direct my work this year. So I thank the Board of Education. It's not that they didn't set district goals in the past. These are just more explicit. They go on the website, like many districts do, to do that. So this year, we have a brief overview of what the goals look like, then the board discussion on them, and then it's the Board of Education's role to adopt the goals, and then they become district goals itself. So the first goal here that we have is, because nothing happens without money, is basically to develop a fiscally responsible 26-27 budget that supports a high-quality and equitable education opportunity for all students. So a school district budget is really an educational plan. It outlines the resources, the tools, and the staff that are needed to accomplish what we set out to do each year. We should do in our work every single year, identify cost efficiencies. And this year, in particular, given what's going on with the federal government and what we're hearing, the constriction it will place on the state government, find ways to incorporate programs that are funded through grants into the general fund budget. So I know that that is something Ms. McCoy and I have had a number of conversations on. And if anyone tuned in last spring, the Board of Education set that out as something very important to our work here in Austin. So that's an example of my draft of a suggestion of a fiscal goal. Wish I could go through them all and then we can have a discussion afterwards? Let's do that. Great, okay. So the student equity goal. The student equity goal is to ensure continued support and articulation of the board's Equity Policy 0105. The policy holds the Austin Free School District accountable for the achievement and growth for all students, and it commits to an inclusive, equitable, and welcoming school environment, a diverse and culturally competent and inclusive workforce, and prioritizes family and community engagement. If you take a look at our four pillars on our long-range plan, it exemplifies the student equity goal in many pieces and shapes. Examples of why it's important to highlight this very special policy is the work that Dr. Dealey does in terms of her as Director of Student Success. We have regular, about five times a year, equity meetings. They are packed, they are so well-attended. I know Melissa, you've been, you're on that committee, you attend them. Annie, you've dropped by when people have time. It's a great thing, and you could see a lot of the work that takes place. Recently, they committed to doing public service announcements on this. They cover many different areas of this. One of the things that came up in one of the equity meetings I mentioned before was the stress of scheduling and how a student's schedule can not create a very, can create an unwelcoming environment for some kids when they approach attending school. They oversee a lot of the work that we do with the MBK program and our prestigious ladies of power. And once a year, there is on a Saturday. And if anyone is interested in attending and seeing all the artifacts of this policy and listening directly from students, I suggest you mark your calendars and attend that Equity Fair itself. We've asked Dr. Dealey to give an overview, again, a presentation about the work that she's doing in support of this policy, and she will, she's actually thrilled to do that and to give a presentation to the board and put together a report on it this year. Curriculum and Instruction. We have three big ones, and again, these get articulated in different ways. The first bullet here speaks to what we've been doing for the past two years, taking a look at our long-range plan and each building, developing SMART goals and taking a look at their data, their information from the different committees, the work that they've done all summer, and then putting together particular goals that will help them improve instruction and the relevance of our curriculum and academic programs. This year, we'll give a special emphasis on the ARC program implementation as we completed three years, and it's great to just check in to see what's working on it, what's not, and to give the board a status report on that. We have a new board policy this year. That's why it should be in this. It's the curriculum review cycle. I want to thank the board for putting forth in their work that we're going to take an area of curriculum and instruction and basically put it through a lens, a lens of a program evaluation model. That model itself will call for an internal evaluation where we use guiding questions that come from tri-states and a number of the large educational associations, even from the state education department. And then it includes an external evaluation. We bring in consultants, we bring in people with an outside lens. We invite feedback from parents and from students to talk about what they feel are strengths of a program, and then importantly, what are opportunities for improvement in that. And the last piece of this is really what every school district should be doing this year, is being, taking a look at the state of New York's portrait of a graduate. This portrait of a graduate calls all of us to stop looking at graduation as passing five Regents exams and seat times, and really think about a larger scope of work. Are there different career and college pathways? Are there portfolios? Are there internship opportunities? Are there cumulative projects that children can complete in order to graduate? I will say that Austin is one of five, Maria, in New York State for the PTEC grant?
Yes, we are five.
Which basically was the mission statement of the PTEC grant or the foundation of it comes from a study done by the Westchester County Economic Partnership Group and taking a look at four industries that require a new workforce. It's medical technology, cybersecurity, computer science.
Medical information.
And then medical information. And medical information itself. So these were industries that basically put together a report saying that we need workers. So the PTEC grant basically helps educate students. They will get career experience in these fields. They will gain college credit, almost two years of college credit. Associate's degree before they leave.
Complete their associate's degree.
Right, before they leave our high school. And they gain a ton of work experience in those fields. So I know New York State is looking at the five school districts in the state that have this PTEC grant to see what our data looks like and how it's going. Thanks, Alita. Was I behind in my clicking? I apologize. Thank you. Oh my goodness, a super important goal is our facilities goal. We have, for those of you who have been, watched the past few meetings, we've been giving updates. We have a $210 million capital and improvement bond project. And the board in their work towards that requires oversight of me, of Alita, of Jared, to make sure that we are holding regular meetings, we're providing upgrades, and that we stay on time and on budget towards that. In addition, we have a number of capital projects as well this year. If you've been at Brookside School, you can't help but miss the trailers and the dirt. We are doing a two-story classroom addition to that building. So that's why that's highlighted as a goal. And community, communication and community engagement. Again, I make my pitch for the Communications Committee if anyone wants to join. And basically, it's to continue to develop and foster community partnerships as outlined in our long-range plan. So those partnerships help support our individual students, support the diversity of their needs and of our students. And again, if you were at the back-to-school event hosted by O Prime, we saw our SEPTA community, we saw Open Door, we saw Neighbor's Link. We saw so many community partners and students helping out on that. And this goal comes from the point that we all know, it takes a village to raise a child. So we want to make sure that we maximize our community platforms with our parents and our residents to inform and engage with our communities in ways that help folks to understand. So it's through feedback this year that Nicole Reese put together a whole group of short calendars and announcements, even what we're talking about back-to-school nights. Those are all part of last year's goal and what we're implementing this year. And then the last goal, basically, is to take a look. It's an ongoing goal, but it's such an important one because the Board of Education is a governance agency. Right? So it's a constant, which I appreciate, that the board holds retreats and brings in facilitators to help out, but it's to review, and the board now has a governance committee. It's basically to review their roles and responsibilities and build team relationships with the superintendent, with the executive council who are here, and establish clear roles on each of, clear understanding and shared understanding of our respective roles. And basically, to identify what areas do we need to strengthen? What areas do we need to provide additional oversight or a different approach? And then in terms of the conduct evaluations, the board started its own self-evaluation. Last year was the first time, I think, using SUPERVAL for the superintendents?
Yes.
Yeah, second year. Okay. So SUPERVAL, which are tools that are new, but again, trying to figure out, do they meet the goals of this Board of Education? And then this year, because it's a big ticket in the budget to prepare for the 26-27 superintendent search process for Austin. So those were the overview of the goals, as I heard from the board, from our work together, and for the board to consider. Thank you.
All right. Just to recap the process that we've undergone for these goals to date before we open up for a discussion from the board, we kind of tasked Mary with encapsulating what some potential goals could be based on discussions we had already had, and of course, her knowledge of the district. She gave kind of an idea sheet to us in advance, and we discussed it at the last board meeting, so we're continuing that discussion this evening. I want to remind our trustees that we had decided that a norm after presentations was to allow each of us about two minutes to ask questions. At that point, we can decide if we want to kind of open it up to discuss further, but I'll probably take kind of a temperature check to see if it's necessary to continue the discussion or if we have already found consensus. So with that, does anybody have any questions or comments or things that they'd like to ask? We can ask you to try to keep your questions to two minutes. Anybody? You good?
No.
You can go.
Sure. See? So thanks, Mary. These are really solid. I wasn't at the last meeting, was out of town for a family trip, but these look, you know, pretty good shape, at least my assessment of them. It's interesting because Westchester and Putnam School Board Association, aka WestPut, just sent out this morning a, I guess they do weekly emails, and they said, hey, here's a, like, tip. Remember, from a governance standpoint, the board, school board, does the what and the why and the goals, and we try to leave it to the administration to do the why. So I think this, I'm sorry, the how. And so I think this looks great. I guess my question was generally, when does the board, and then I guess the public, see the how? So for example, we have support ongoing curriculum, teaching and learning SMART goals for curriculum instruction. When do we, as the board, see those SMART goals? And any data to say, yeah, we're meeting this one? And similar, like, to the PTEC one in college and career pathways, when do we see the how that the administration is proposing to meet that goal and the data around that? So it's like a process question. We're up here, and then you're doing the how, and are we meeting it or not with the data? Can you just explain that and just clarify that?
Sure, absolutely. So if you remember, last year was the first attempt to do more of a SMART goal approach with it. And by the time, because of certain calendar, we had the vote on the bond, that didn't happen until the last meeting in October, first meeting in November. So that's too late. So this year, it will, the first one will be the first meeting in October. So the board will get all that information ahead of time.
Okay, so before the first?
Where the elementary principals come and present their goals based on their data. So it's the elementary annual report on the long-range plan and their goal setting for the year.
They have, they will present to the board?
Yes. So the board will get?
How?
Here at a board meeting, like we did last year.
Right, okay. And then does that apply for all, like, all of these? Like, will there be presentations around all of these to see where we are? Are we meeting the fiscal goal? Are we meeting the facilities goal and on and on?
Right, right. Well, that's up to the board. I mean, clearly, the buildings, the instructional goal, and you will get minutes. I think there will be a board member on the curriculum review committee, so people can bring that up during board discussion. The board will get an overview of the assistant superintendents and their goals very shortly, along with the data from the state. However, it's embargoed, so we have to talk around it until we're allowed to talk about it with the public. So that will all happen this month. And in terms of the fiscal goal, I think you have a robust budget process here in Austin. There's a full-day Saturday workshop. And again, we devoted in this year's calendar a good number of meetings to make sure that the board gets all the information they have to put together a fiscally sound budget. And we're open to hear from the board as to what additional information you might like or what didn't you like last year. But in terms of that goal, I see it as a partnership with the board as to how you want to go about that.
Thank you.
I'll go around. Annie, do you have any?
I think I felt pretty good after the last meeting.
Okay. Melissa, I'm just going around in order?
No. Same sentiments as last meeting.
I'm good with, I think we had probably pretty good discussions last time, so I'm good.
Yeah. I'm happy with this. I'm glad that Rob asked a question that he did because I think it's important to people who are watching to understand who may not, who don't get the WestPut emails that say this is the role of the board, right? And so we're setting these very broad goals for people who do expect us to be right now saying, hey, what were our reading scores? And we need them to be X percent higher. What was our graduation rate? And we need it to be X percent higher, that that's not, just because it's not on this document, that doesn't mean that we're not doing that work, that this is a broader picture.
Right, very broad. I mean, I'll pull something like, which is part of Kim, Lindsay's, and Jessica's work, even if you talk about IEP goals, which are set, is very much governed by law, but there's a ton of oversight on them. Now, you want to make sure that we have fidelity of implementation on all IEP goals, but in the middle of the year, you might have another meeting to say, you know, we need to adjust the plan to that. It wouldn't be something to say, to use an example you did, we need to make sure X number of percent of kids no longer need them. That wouldn't be a goal in terms of special ed, when we're looking at fidelity of implementation of IEP goals. But again, there are just many facets of the work that we do that you have qualitative and quantitative data that demonstrates that you're working towards those.
I just wanted to say, Mary, thank you for, you know, taking this to the level where it's not, we didn't have to create a lot from scratch. A lot of, the thought went into this. I know we did have quite a few questions, like even at the time, we had a retreat and then, you know, last meeting, but I think honestly, this was much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you, Roger. And I think I thank the board for their oversight in this. And again, Rob mentioned WestPut, that a lot of this is not original to me. It's crafted from WestPut, New York State School Boards, my ears in other places. But I listened to the board and all your conversations throughout the year, so trying to capture the broad strokes. And I think it's important for the community to know that at every single board meeting, this Board of Education provides fiscal oversight and responsibility. They get a ton of information behind the agenda items that are here on the board for them, for the agenda for them to review. So again, the board, we try to provide as much possible every two weeks to make sure when the board is seated here at the table in their governance role, that they have enough information to make the decisions they need to make in representing the community. So I do want to thank the Board of Education for the seriousness with which they approach their work, because you do. Thank you.
I appreciated that example you just gave of how we do not use children graduating from services as a measure of success because there are children who will have services forever, and it doesn't impact their ability to succeed. And it's just, it's nice because it gives a message that having services doesn't make you lesser than. It's not a measurement of your ability. It doesn't mean that you're doing anything wrong, and I just appreciate that message.
Thank you, right. And it's one that people forget, so thank you for that. That's a topic near and dear to my heart when we were, it was a preliminary plan back with another Commissioner of Education where they were going to start flagging districts based upon their classification rate and color coding them. And my comment was, do you want to put, like, signs around communities saying, no special ed need applied? Do we need to look at every child who might need this and say, I can't because we're going to hit a number that you're saying is, where'd you pull that number from? So there was a lot of heated discussion, but they never moved forward on it.
Great. It shouldn't be about a quota. It should be about getting every child what they need.
Hundred percent. A hundred percent.
All right. I'm reading the room, and it seems like we'll be ready to vote on this when we come up to it on the agenda, so we can move on. Our next item on the agenda is our first audience recognition, which is still at this point for agenda items only and not to exceed 10 minutes. Do we have anybody in person who wishes to speak? Is there anybody online who wishes to speak? Okay. Then we'll move ahead. Does anybody have anything they wish to break out from 4.1 through 4.4? All right, I'll take a motion for 4.1 through 4.4. 4.1, Resolution to Adopt the District Goals for the 2025-2026 School Year. 4.2, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Annual Reorganization Meeting of July 9th, 2025. 4.3, Resolution to Approve the Minutes of the Special Meeting of July 9th, 2025. 4.4, Resolution Designating the Officials to Act at the Special Meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, um, moving on to our Consent and Judge, uh, Business Office Matters. I'll take a motion for five point one.
Second.
Five point one, resolution regarding interfund transfers. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Uh, does anybody have anything from section six they wish to break out? All right, um, I'll take a resolution for six point one, six point two, and six point four through six point nine. Six point one, resolution regarding rescinding professional staff appointments. Six point two, resolution regarding rescinding bus attendant appointments. Six point four, resolution regarding support staff appointments. Six point five, resolution regarding bus attendant appointments. Six point six, resolution regarding professional staff appointments, summer programs. Six point seven, resolution regarding support staff appointments, before-after-school programs. Six point eight, resolution of regarding per diem substitute appointments. Six point nine, resolution regarding approval of school volunteers. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. All right, this brings us to our next and final audience recognition on any school-related matters. Um, do we have anybody in person who wishes to speak? Anybody online? Give it just a moment. Sometimes, you know, somebody might be scrambling to their computer right now to raise their hand. All right, we'll move along. Uh, the next item on our agenda is board reports and dialogue. Have any committees met? We'll take committee updates first. No, still getting things off the ground beginning of school year.
Can I bring up one thing?
Yes, but before you do, I just want to remind everybody, if you haven't, to respond to Illy with your availability for um a second retreat date, an evening retreat date, we're going to try to um catch as many people's schedules as possible um and make it available to, so that you can be present in person or virtually if necessary. So please get back to her, because obviously we want to nail down the stuff that we didn't finish last time, so that we can have things like our goals and evaluation um done before then. Go ahead, Roger, you can take it away. You had something?
Actually, that was one of the things I was going to bring up about, about that, but um, the, uh, just a quick question. So um, I, I know, um, we, you know, we had already assigned folks to each of the different committees. I think one of the things we may want to do at some point, just get their, get it put up online. We used to have a link for the, uh, for each of the different committees. Are we not doing that this year?
I didn't hear.
So, sorry, just for clarity, um, we used to have published on our website the list of um committees and the committee assignments on there, and it's out, now it just says coming soon on there.
Okay, I know, I emailed Illy and it's on board docs, which is available to us. Um, but I do think it might be helpful, because there have been times where people have been left out of um, you know, emails that they were meant to get, because people probably didn't know the committee assignments. So it's, uh, I guess the question is, would we like to have that published on the school website publicly?
Yeah, my, my rationale behind this is just because with Mary putting out a, a, um, you know, a, an openness to the um community to join, sometimes it helps just kind of like, then they could see like who else, who they might know that's on there, that it might be easier just to reach out and say, yeah, I'd like to join that committee, and, because it, it's not always they know. I mean, they may not know a board member, but they may, you know, but just leaving more opportunities open so people can reach out. That's my thinking.
I also think like, when we were, for example, looking at um in, into establishing a self-governance committee and a curriculum review committee, I was out there on school websites searching around to find what committees do other boards have on their boards, you know, to see how other people organize their committees, so it would be nice um to, to be able to provide that information to other, maybe potential school boards who might be interested in, in not, you know, outside of our community.
Yeah, I mean, and also, the other thing, it's, uh, because we are a pretty engaged school board, so I, and, and engaged with our community. Just having that level of accessibility to our community would be a great thing.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any objection to publishing that online? I'm not sure if it actually has been posted online from us in the past. I know.
It was. Last year it was.
Then, um, all right, Illy, you got your marching orders. All right. Um, anything else for board dialogue?
Um, this may have been something that we wanted to talk about in retreat. I don't remember, but um Roger and I had expressed interest in going to DC.
I'm sorry, hang on one second. Something's wrong with, I, the, the mic is not working for Annie, I don't think.
It might be.
No, it, it
It is. She's just, I think she just speaks quietly.
No, no, she used to, it, it did work before. It's just this one, it's not, first, it, it worked before I heard her, before, it's just this, this time it's not up. Sorry, Annie.
It's okay. Do you want me to be louder?
No, as long as you're getting picked up by the mic so the community can hear you, that's all. Sorry. I can hear you.
That was too much.
That was too much.
There we go.
Uh, Roger and I had expressed interest in attending the Equity Conference in DC. And we had decided we would talk about that as a board if we wanted to do that. So I'm just bringing that up again.
We just needed board authorization for, for attendance to that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what our, we actually have to revisit that policy, because uh, there was a policy that came up in committee um, po- in the policy committee last year that came to the board table. And then when we were reading that policy through, it said within the policy that you, that we needed board approval to attend any conferences, any professional development, which was not a practice we were doing. So uh, we ended up tabling it, and then, you know, we had our, uh, I think cellphone policy kind of took over at that point.
Yes.
On necessity. So that will be a policy I think we should finish. And, and, you know, probably what's going to be the edit that makes the most sense is that we don't need permission to go to, you know, PD within New York State, but probably should, if we're planning on traveling out of state is probably a reasonable, I don't know. We, we can discuss that. But in the meantime, it would make sense to
Just to talk about it, make sure.
Check in.
Yeah, the out-of-state reason is why I was asking.
If it comes down to like money and only one of us has to go, I'm happy for Annie to go, if it, if it turns out to be that way. Um, but if, if both of us could go, that'd be great.
Okay, so um
I'm going to look it up right now.
Okay. I didn't realize it was such an easy ask.
Is that the National School Board Association Advocacy and Equity Institute? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I also have another question.
Sure.
Um, is, is there, are there community members in the PVIS committee, or is that just school employees?
I, I think that's, I think they're committing. But didn't we have
I think that DeSelia did put out information for community members.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not, I can get exactly how many community members did participate um versus school members. And put that in my board event update for you.
I just ask because uh, there's been some interest in community that I've heard of people wanting to be part of it.
And hence the reason why it would help, help to have the calendars or the committee assignments, because then more people can reach out to Annie. Of course, I'm, I'm, I'm kidding.
So I'm looking up the early bird savings for the Advocacy and Equity Institute end November fourteenth. So obviously, if you want to register in the most fiscally responsible way, we would want to have that done in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think we could, I, I know it's, uh, Alita's looking that up, and then we can
We don't, we don't need to write this second, Alita. If you want to include it in an update for us, I think that would be fine.
Because we're, we're meeting again in next week?
We are?
Yes.
Yeah.
You'll have it by then.
You do. Yeah. Um, but I don't, you know, I don't know how much it
I'm sorry, we, I see us next
Do we not have one on the tenth?
No.
Okay, sorry. That means I can actually go out to dinner with my wife this time.
We might end in time to still buy Powerball tickets.
Oh, yes.
All right, let's do that.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I just, so yeah, so since we just passed these goals, right, and we just mentioned around, okay, that's, that's the what, and now the how, plus, as Mary indicated, the presentations. Last year, we had a live link as part of our weekly update to each meeting for the year. And live discussion, I guess, right, based on, okay, so what goes on the agenda? What are the presentations? When are they going to be? What should go where? Do we, do you need a presentation on one of the curriculum and instruction things, et cetera, et cetera? So what would then now be the mechanism to, to schedule for the rest of our meetings, starting the seventeenth, which is the next one? These presentations and all of that, what gets slot in, what can we add, what, what comes out, how do we do that now?
So um, the topic of agenda setting was one of the things that got pushed off on our retreat.
Okay.
Um, but what's happened generally in the past is that um, just bring it up to me by way of the rest of the board, send an email. That's what our agenda-setting meetings are for with Mary. I have not had one with her
Okay.
Um, in a couple of weeks, we got like kind of a weird um break right now, but I think now that the school year's started, we'll get more into a regular rhythm. You should have access to that calendar for when those meetings are. Um, there is a third seat open to any trustee. I just ask that you email the board in advance if you plan on attending. Um, but of course, you don't have to attend in order to um, you can just share your, I, you know, what you'd like to see on the agenda, or if you have a question about when something would appear. We're starting with, obviously, the draft of last year's meetings, and I assume we'll work from there.
I think Illy and I worked on that, and I apologize, I thought I added it to my last update, but you, you should have it.
Okay.
And the next meeting, uh, our next meeting, our next board meeting, um, this is a requirement under the law. I'm, I'm actually late. We, we need to revise the code of conduct on this. And there was a ton of work done by the Equity Committee and the Code of Conduct Committee in that. So Ann Dealey will be doing a presentation on that. And then following um, the format we used last year, and it seems to dovetail with the presentation by Ann, we're going to have, um, we've scheduled in DeSelia Lopez um and Jeremy Duco's to go over their work whilst driving from that. But the code of conduct um presentation is, we, we, Illy had it published for a thirty-day hearing. Um, and there were significant changes. Our legal spent a significant amount of time reviewing it as well. And it had a ton of feedback from the Code of Conduct Committee all last year. So that's a big report that I have to schedule for next week, because I'm under the state guideline. But anyway, you should have had that calendar. I apologize if it was the Labor Day weekend, but um, we already worked on it. And it's a draft of all topics for the year. And then typically, how this goes is that at an agenda-setting meeting with the board president and other board members, we take a look, move, add, change, et cetera. Yeah.
Right, I found, I personally found, I think, other board members too, like that live look at literally, here's what we've got from September all the way through June. And then as we go through this, we might say, oh, maybe we pitch, let's add this, or maybe we move this, or take this out, like, and move that around. So that, that would be great. So it sounds like it exists. Um, and I guess we'll see it in the next update.
You will, this Friday.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
And it's kind of like a live thing, you know?
I can provide the information.
Okay, go ahead, Alita.
Um, the initial, the initial appropriation was twenty-six thousand eight eighty. An unencumbered balance. Now, as of today, it's twenty-six thousand one fifty-two.
That's for the, for the board um training.
Do you know um how much we spent last year?
I can tell you.
Because I, I mean, it's obvious we haven't spent much money out of there yet, but we have people planning to go. No, we didn't. I, I doubt we did, but I also don't know how much this registration costs.
It costs twenty-four thousand dollars.
I, I mean, I doubt it. I'm sure it won't be a problem, but I feel like we should I don't want to send you guys and then be like, well, you know, now you can't.
It's six hundred before November fourteenth, and then I don't know about
Plus whatever.
Last year, you spent five thousand eight eight, eight, three point five six.
Just a little shy of the twenty-four thousand.
Okay, um, given that, um, are we prepared to make a decision today, or should we wait for Frank and Catherine?
I, I think we've got a quorum. I'm com- I'm comfortable, you know, for us to, to, if you guys are all comfortable to, to give us the okay to go register, so that we can save ourselves a little money. That'd be great.
Do we pay for travel for board members? We do.
Yes, we do.
It's travel, it, it's your, it's your travel, and then you, and when you go down, you get like a certificate, the tax certificate, so you don't pay taxes on your hotel.
So you save your receipts, and then Illy gives you a log, and you log it all and give it to her, and then we reimburse.
Correct.
I usually, like, I went, when I went to the Albany thing, I submitted my hotel, but I didn't submit like the gas or the food, because it was like one meal.
But the, yeah.
I, I, yeah.
Um, the, sorry, just one thing, just I, I think I said before, I misspoke. The tenth was actually the meeting with Mary that, that uh, President VP have, sorry.
That's why.
Yeah, that, that's what I mixed up, sorry about that.
So obviously, Annie and Roger would be in favor of spending the money. And, and I, I am, I, that's fine with me.
Yeah, I'm fine with, so it'd be eight hundred for the early bird, you're right, seven seventy-five for district, plus travel per person, so you're looking at
Twenty-four thousand.
Right, right, and that's, you're not allowed first class, sorry. So that's eight hundred plus travel, so it's probably what, a couple of grand per person? Is that fair?
Probably.
So that's about four thousand. Um, and all year, and the, the budget, it was twenty-four thousand?
Twenty-six eight eighty. And last year, we only spent, we spent less than six.
Oh, okay. Oh, we spend less than six. Okay.
So.
Yeah, I'm fine. I mean, it was definitely as a matter of, of formality going forward of how we want to do these things. But I think generally speaking, just for conversation purposes in the future, I think as, as, as long as you bring it up at the table, and there's not uh, like more than three people that want to go, then, and we have the budget for it, then I'm, I'm all in, right? So I think that's where we're at. So I'd be open, secondly speaking, who want to go, and if a third person, because we don't have everybody here tonight wanting to go, that as well.
You want to come? We could party.
You can do it, Melissa. You can do it. It'll be twenty-six thousand now.
I'll, I'll think about it, but um, because that's a wonky time of year for me, but
Yeah.
But just, that's what I'm saying, just in general, I think as a matter of practice, we could discuss with the board, as long as more than three people don't want to go, and it's in the budget. And it's not a frivolous spend, because this is a NISBA sponsored event, right? So I'm open for boards being able to practice professional development. Um, and if it's more than three people, then we decide at the, at the table, who, you know, as long as we bring it up at the table, I think that's a, a good process to have.
Okay.
Also gives transparency for everybody too.
Uh, so I'm getting a green light here for um Annie and Rob, so. Sounds good.
Thanks, everybody.
So to that, to that point, as a matter of consistency, there's the NISBA conference this year, right?
Yes.
A couple of us so far have said we wanted to go. I don't know.
That, sorry, that's the leadership one, right?
No, the, the annual convention.
Oh, the annual convention. Oh, yeah, that's in October.
I still have to see if I can go, because I need um to be approved for time off in order to do that, but I am interested.
I have told Illy that I, I would like to go.
Yes, and I think that
Me.
Did you? Okay. I don't know if Catherine, Catherine goes to those sometimes, but last year she went virtually. I don't know where her plans are.
She mentioned virtual again this year.
Yeah.
It's in-person and virtual this year?
Last year, they started doing like a virtual option, and it was like, um, you know, they do a bunch of sessions every, you know, hour or whatever, and you have a bunch to choose from, and then they would livestream like one of them, like one or two, I think. They were just picking a few to like stream live.
So it's not a full experience.
It's not a full experience.
I, I just think you, I think you just miss out on that, that connection term, in, without being there in person. But I guess, you know, teach their own on the options, but I just think there's like something pretty substantial to get out of these things.
And it's in the city this year, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a huge advantage, right?
Yes, and the district
Because last year.
For people who are watching, the district does not pay for hotels for us when it's in the city. You got to come home.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess that's even more reason why it was much less we spent last year.
It was in the city last year.
I'm, I'm so happy, because usually it's always so far upstate, we're always the ones making the trip, so I'm happy it's in our backyard two years in a row.
So I guess that's something we can uh continue to discuss. So I guess that's something we can uh continue to discuss. Um, I need, it's something I need to sort out for myself. Is there anything else for board dialogue? Um, we are gonna hold on, let me pull up my little sticky so I can read the right.
We are going to be done in time for Lotto tickets?
We are going to be done in time for Lotto tickets.
Hell, we're going for a big party if one of us wins it.
Okay, uh, I'd like to take a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. Okay, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? All right.